...in eighteen as per received. Any corrections or additions that you know? Chair, we'll entertain the motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been duly made.
Seconded.
Duly seconded. Further discussion, all in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
So the minutes are approved.
Mayor, I wanted to apologize that we had last minute changes to the agendas today. And we did post it throughout the city, but we did add a power board appointment and a resolution at the end. Trying to get everything done at the end of the fiscal year is tough. That's why this agenda is so long, but everybody, the agendas that are available, it's a final agenda, just wondering you be aware of that.
Certainly feel free to stop me or any of the rest of us if you miss something in the work and look over it because.
Yes, absolutely.
You've done the change of two times.
I think we only sent you four of them.
Item file, awards, presentation, performance.
We had talked about, you were going to recommend on the Board of Zoning Appeals, Jacqueline Johnson, who is a local resident, lives on Jordan Avenue, that I have spoken to, is very willing to serve, and tried to explain to her kind of what the position is about, and we have an opening there, so that is back in your court if that's what you'd like to do.
All right. I will be glad to appoint her to the Board of Zoning Appeals, such as she rather wishes, but the show, and we're voting Jacqueline on the performance of Ms. Johnson to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you want.
Jacqueline Johnson, okay. Do you need a motion for that?
I do.
Make a motion if you.
My power department, is that seconded? You seconded, any further discussion? All in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
That point won't stand. And big one, Mount Pleasant Power System Board, I was opposed by the Power System Board and by Clough owner, he served on the board for many years, his term expires in March of 2020, so this form will be to fill that slot in for March of 2020, and going to appoint to that board, Justin Robideau, so to live up to that term. Chair, we'll entertain a motion. Still move? You move, seconded? You seconded? All in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
Like sign that point will stand. Item six, completion view of unfinished business for prior meeting. Eight, ordinance 2018-1020, public hearing and final reading, and ordinance to amend ordinance 2017-1005, set ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions in the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, fiscal year beginning July 1st on 2017 and ending June 30th, 2018.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is to finalize our current fiscal year budget that will end on June 30th, 2018. We've gone over several changes and handed out bullet points of what those changes meant. If there's anything else that you need to add to it, Loretta, but I think that once we get this done, we'll be able to close the books for the current fiscal year that we're in. And this is a public hearing.
I assume that we are in a, no extra funds, nothing else has been over.
Absolutely.
And we've been in it since when, first?
Mid-May?
Mid-May.
I mean, there's been purchases, no doubt, but.
Yeah, sure. Has everything been okay with that?
No, we've cut off spending.
We've had to yell at a few people.
I think I might give four next year to the department.
As department.
Thomas, I kept it from Holland. For Parks and Rec, I just want you to know that.
Let's see, you got some, this is a public hearing on that, and if anyone, this time here from the public to address these budget amendments, or against this thing?
Current fiscal year that we're in, that we're about to close out of.
And then, one thing, the biggest, the biggest dollar amount was that, we had talked about before, paying off, paying that 1.8 million on the.
The revolving loan fund, yes.
Revolving loan fund, that is included in this budget amendment. So if you see this huge number of that.
And we've just been told by everybody involved, there's no reason to put that off. It doesn't pay it off, but it pays it down.
And let the record show no one spoke for against that in another hearing. Any questions, what any commissioners like to ask on any budget items? Real good to be mayor, I'll make a motion. Motion to approve ordinance 2018-1020, is that seconded? You seconded? Further discussion? All in favor of signature by the same aye. Those like sign, ordinance has passed.
Mayor, before we move into the next public hearing, I'd like to recommend to the commission that they consider a motion to determine the current certified tax rate that's been provided to us as recently as Thursday evening, that's why so many things are on the agenda tonight, but we recently got word from the county assessor's office that the certified tax rate with its regular year is 1.4479.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we officially determine Mount Pleasant's certified tax rate as 1.44.
That's a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to officially determine that keep Mount Pleasant certified tax rate as 1.44, and I believe it goes out to 79.
It's not to keep, it's to determine that that is.
Determine as agreed, as presented by the, say again, who presented it?
Bobby Daniel.
I know it was that tax minister, but do that more so it can reflect it in.
I'll second. All right, the motion has been made and duly seconded to sit where it exceeds the certified rate according to.
No, it's to determine what the rate is, the certified tax rate is.
I don't see that.
If not, it was reported, I would like to make a motion to officially determine that.
I'm familiar with that document, but it's not part of this.
No, because it's just in the form of a motion.
You're going to have this to enter the document?
It's going to be in a minute. It's a motion that'll be in a minute.
Yes, sir.
I didn't think this, I guess this is my fault, I did not know this is what we're going to do, and I thought we were going to make this as part of a motion to accept this right.
That's what you're doing right now.
But I thought it would be part of the document, it's not part of the document.
No, because you're about to go into public hearing, right after we do this.
My understanding, Mayor, was we couldn't do it, we had to do it before we went into the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that. I don't see it on the document.
No, because you're making this motion, then you're going into the public hearing for discussion.
I would suggest next time, four years from now, we're still sitting around this table, it's written on the document, it will stop some confusion, because this is extremely important, and it has caused in the past many, many things to go astray. It would be a good idea to do that, whoever's here, maybe in terms of.
I assume they have to do that, I guess, by state or whatever.
We have to acknowledge, we have to acknowledge publicly the certified tax rate.
That's the only thing I don't like about that, is when you acknowledge and turn it right around and.
I apologize, Mayor, of that you were going to do it that way. I gather from that and ask for how we had to do it, I should have asked you to.
And I thought I was, I thought I made myself clear, but I.
Well, everything except I thought it was going to be on.
We typed it in there. Am I doing that correctly, Ford?
Yes.
You have to determine that the certified tax rate that was given to the city by the state for equalization, Bobby Daniel first.
So we have a motion and then a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, that motion has passed, I know. Okay, now we're going to have the public hearing to consider this, right?
Yes, consider exceeding the certified tax rate.
To exceed the certified.
Yes, and that was published in the paper, as it needed to be in a timely fashion, and so this is a public hearing.
Questions for any commissioners? This is a public hearing, so any of you folks that are out here tonight, if you want to express some opinion about this pro or con, you're welcome to do so by coming forward, state your name and address, and address this issue. Basically, what we're going to do is to adopt the old rate, which would lower the tax rate down to bring in the same number of dollars that we brought in in the last fiscal year. We're going to leave that rate at $1.62, which will bring us to about $180,000 more dollars.
I was just going to say, if you wanted to share that, the difference.
Because it's all our money. This decision was made to do this because Mount Pleasant doesn't have the best treasury in the world, and people whose homes have been reappraised and reassessed, their value has gone up, if they sell it, they're going to have an increased sale. If it didn't go up, or come up, even went down, then it's not going to affect them at all. So, but Mount Pleasant is cash strapped, it has made some progress in the last two or three years, and, but it felt like the best, all the people sitting on this board are charged this fiscal agency with this money, and to make the best decision you can, nobody ever wants to raise taxes, it's one of those things. The property tax vote is going to bring in about one-third of the budget, about what it brings in, and it gets 99% of the gliding.
Well, it brings in 1.6, and our budget's at 11 million, not even one-third.
Yeah, but that's what you hear about, you don't hear about it with other things on the street, and you don't, like I say, you don't want, you don't want to pay it. I pay property tax on a couple houses, and they were fed in.
And I think you all know, as a result of the issues with the tax increment financing with the title plan, that there's half a million dollars out there that's going to come back into our coffers once that four, five-year plan is over with. We're trying to get to that point where we can survive between now and then, but the mayor is absolutely correct that the difference between the certified tax rate and keeping our tax rate at where it is right now is a little over $180,000.
Really, right now, we're already at 1.62.
We are at 1.62.
We're keeping the rate.
We're keeping it where it is in a reassessment year. You're correct.
Let the record show the no one in the public vote for ordinance, please. Public hearing will be over then.
Yes, now we have our third public hearing, we have next.
Item seven, 2018-1021, public hearing, final reading, ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopt the annual budget exactly fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, and ending June 30th, 2019.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is also a public hearing, and this is adopting the budget and the tax rate. I went over a study session, several assumptions, and chime in, Loretta, wouldn't want to miss something, but just so you're aware of, we did budget for a 15% increase in health insurance because that's actually low and anticipated, and by moving our dental and vision insurance to the same as our medical care provider, we were able to keep that at 8%. So we do have some wiggle room there, but that's a 8% increase, hate to say that's a very good increase, it's very low. So that is, that is not reflecting the budget, there's 50% in there, but that gives us some wiggle room as we move forward. We have the donations in here that you'll be voting on later in the formal resolutions to the museum, the CDC, and the State Human Resources Agency. We, Loretta, you have down here, conversion to a cash basis for the budget purposes previously, it's been in a accrual basis. We moved the principal lease payment account number for accounting purposes, bad debt recovery, in process of restructuring and old loans, revenues from fines due to the new ordinance, and updated rate study for water and sewer connection fees was added into it, so you want to, is there anything that I've missed? These are all things that are in there, and we wanted to just make sure you were aware were in there.
It is a little bit of judgment universe on the black, perhaps you got today in the.
Pardon?
Totally, it didn't amount more than about $1,000, but it's now readjusted in trying to make sure that we get as close as we can to what we think will be our actual interest. And that does include, I want to point out, that does include assuming that we would get the splash pad grant, and we.
For that.
The match, we just include the match. We don't usually include the grant, but we felt that we needed to add to make sure that that was, it was in there, it was funded, it was funded upfront, and then if we get the grant, of course, it will reflect the whole grant amount, if we don't get it, then it's in there and we can just take it out.
Any questions? I know we buried you in paperwork.
Okay, folks, no questions?
No, I'll, I'll leave to thank Loretta who takes that probably kind of work and answer her questions, what your job is to do. That's right, and I didn't take it lightly, as they do, well, no, I would watch it probably a lot more than that, frankly.
Maybe some new reading left.
Yeah, probably some new reading.
That's also how you learn as a commissioner.
That's exactly right.
You know, ask questions, you'll never learn.
I want to thank you, Bill, because the questions you asked were very enlightening, the time you spent on it, and made it very clear, the questions were perfect, and the time explaining it, and what you did on the study session. For most of us that don't go through it as detailed, who don't have the knowledge to go through it, and Loretta explained it, Kate, who, because the time you spent, and the patience you had with this to explain it, I appreciate it.
So with that said, Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve the tax rate and the budget.
Most have been duly made, that we accept the tax rate and the budget year 2018, 2019. Duly seconded, if there are further discussions, no further. Okay, there ain't going to be no further discussion, Chair, we'll call, please call it off, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Berry? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
By zero.
By zero, congratulations to those that either worked so hard on this, but our department heads too, folks, you all amongst you, that you're a big part of how this thing functions and so forth, know you didn't get everything you wanted, but try again next year. Ask for a little more, hope to get a little less.
No, no, we're on that.
Do we have to vote on that, or is that covered in what I did before, the ordinance before, after we got, before the public hearing?
You only needed a motion.
Okay. I didn't want us to skip and go over and come back and buy this.
Item D, ordinance 2018-1022, public hearing slash final reading, and ordinance establishing the City of Mount Pleasant Historical and Longing Commission.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this is also a public hearing, our last and final fourth one tonight, and this is for final passage of creating the Historic Zoning Commission. All this does is create the commission for the, all of you to determine who needs to be on it, and then the commission that is appointed would be working on the design guidelines, bylaws, it will take quite some time before this is actually up and running, this just creates the actual board. They'll be, they'll be developing the map of the area that it covers, design guideline, bylaws, everything else, and they'll have to bring it to you, but.
Can, do I have to be started on this fire to the form of a board?
No, you have to have a board.
What is the time limit?
I would just think, once you've created the commission, you want to start creating the board fairly quickly, but you have to have the board to take any next step, to do bylaws, to do design guidelines, to create a map, all of which will come through the planning commission and come through the city commission, so as we've said in the past in study sessions and other meetings, the board is probably the most important part of the historic zoning commission.
Sure is.
So we'll be working with you all on talking about best individuals, do not have to be a city resident, may, one that isn't, that may have some expertise, but we'll be talking about that once we've created the, once this is finalized and passed on second meeting. Did I miss anything, Ford?
That's correct, this is just establishing the board, and then the board will put everything else before you at a later time.
Well, I'm going to ask a follow-up question, Mayor, so if we do this tonight, that doesn't give us, it says that we have to have this done 30 days, 90 days, anything like that, right?
It doesn't, but you, just like we have openings on commissions, you don't want.
I'm not saying we should just put this way back in the back and do it, but I understand the mayor's question.
This is, these people that select this board are going to have to be buried across that, this board, this thing has the potential to be, it's one of the greatest, and it also has the potential to be actually not so good, so we have to make sure we got people that are not so determined for it to be one way or another, but I read harsh stories about this with the commissions.
In answer to the mayor's question, okay, when you were talking about, the appointment of the board is pending, waiting on applying for some further grant work and moving forward, some things pending on the.
No, we can go ahead and appoint the board whenever.
Go north and forward, go off something like that.
No, I'm asking, is.
No, we would want to have the board established before we go to apply to be a certified government, is that correct? If we don't even have a board, yeah, so we would want to appoint the board, there's no sense of urgency, but we'll be working with all of you on suggestions and feedback on possible names, but we wouldn't go to get that certified government that you're talking about, that where you get grant opportunities, until we actually have a board.
So it's, but it will hold up doing that.
Yes, it will.
That's what I'm saying, it's going to enter that.
You're right, yeah, I missed your point, you're right.
Well, I cut out of the Herald last, a couple, three, four weeks ago, some of the issues that were coming for the Historic Zoning Commission.
And it was kind of ridiculous, yeah.
And I would have had a spasm, and somebody told me that I had to follow those rules with that.
Yeah, and that is not what we're looking to do at all, but yeah, it, you have, that does happen, and we don't want it to happen, but yeah.
That's why they have to be so careful that these people are not so determined that you're going to follow an 1800 rule on house.
I agree with you, it's going to be very important, so we'll be working in the next couple, few months to.
That's why I decided to be a duty department.
We'll be discussing in the future.
I'll do my duties, okay?
We haven't voted on this yet, Mayor?
No, no, we haven't, I think that was one out of this, I guess, this is, this is a very important.
We have to be so careful, though, because I, I've reached out to some of those in Palocian that are out there, and we can't have people that never mind.
No, we cannot.
I mean, it's, oh, man.
But that's one, Mayor, I guess you can go outside the city or whatever.
Well, you have to on some of these things, we don't have a person here that has architectural experience, we don't have a historian anymore, I guess the last historian here was Ms. Shackleton by his mom, you know, that's years ago, and that's.
There was something to it, it was important.
Okay, folks.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion to.
That we get the mayor to establish the City of Mount Pleasant Historical Zoning Commission.
Go ahead and make the second, then we'll have the public hearing. Is the second.
I'll second.
You seconded?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
I'm going, right now, I'm just going to have, all right, there, those of you who are in attendance tonight, if any of you have any comments you'd like to make about this pro or con at this time, you're welcome to do so. It won't hurt anybody's feelings, if you want to make them.
Right.
Nope.
It's a very important step in Mount Pleasant, it could bring many good things for us, it could lead to grit in your teeth. Yeah, let the record show no one's chose to speak pro or against, all right, the motion's on the floor, then duly seconded, further discussion? All in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, that motion has passed. Item seven, monthly report for the mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the department heads and employees, they've worked so dirty on this budget, standing by every time we do a budget, it's so much quicker and so much more efficient than those with the county, it's just unbelievable that you can do a budget like this, of course, it's a lot smaller, we don't have the schools, schools don't have $15 million.
It's a different process, so.
But it is, it's a process, and y'all come up with good data, and do a great job, and our employees have, I think have done a wonderful job in that time Mount Pleasant Estate Financial float, the employees of this city have worked to keep this city out of, coming out of it and continue, and it will be, it will be a blessing to have a great employee like this. That applies to most everybody, I guess.
Ask you to ask for more next year, if they were going to get it.
Ask for more, get less.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay, now to make the monthly financial budget report, please.
We're grateful that we finished our budget, got it all ready to be ready, again, we do have a lot of department heads that put in a lot of time and effort into it, and we all try to work together to pull it together, it's not just a one or two-person endeavor that takes us all, we have cut off our spending pretty much, I will say that Kelly does a really good job of getting on people.
Don't get her.
She stays on, and that's what her, I have called her to do, and she does a really good job of making sure that we get, try to get all of those invoices in, getting them paid, and getting everything cleared up as much as possible by the end of the year, so we don't have a whole lot carrying over from one year to the other. For this month, for the month of May, which we're reporting on tonight, the cash and the check-in and deposits in the general fund amounted to a little bit over $2 million. The gas fund, which is their check-in savings and their CDs, but it does exclude the customer deposit, that amount, $2,664,000. The water has a little over $3,300,000, but that does include that $1,812,000 that we will be making that payment, so next month, that month, that dollar figure's going to go. But on the flip side, the liability will also go, go down, and we are anticipating getting new amortization schedules to reflect more principal payments and less interest payments, so that should just be a win-win.
And it'll be paid off, hopefully, soon, completely, and put into a long-term loan.
Yeah, at a lower interest rate. That concludes my reports for the month of May, is there any questions?
Motion has been made to approve the report, is it seconded? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of signature by the same aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, that report has been accepted. Item nine, monthly report for city manager?
Mayor and Commissioners, you have it in your packet of the reports from the digital departments, and I put that together to create the state of the city that will be out the first of July, believe it or not, first of July, so that'll be available in City Hall and online and on our website.
I noticed you highlighted the municipal solid ratio of 197 or 94 tons, there's no reason that being.
Yeah, I wondered that too, because it specifically was highlighted.
Where is that?
Is that pretty much.
What are you looking at? I'm sorry.
On your community service report.
Oh.
Highlighted that.
Steve's not here, he's on vacation. Oh, just the amount that it is?
Yeah, is that pretty much, I was thinking it always ran in the 190s, maybe I'm wrong.
Nothing, nothing's crazy off mark, it's just, we took a big hit in an increase last year.
Yeah, would you go over what we're paying a ton, please, and where it's being spoke of? I know where it's going, but I don't know what we're paying a ton.
I know it's $36, but I will, I'll have a report for you next month, yeah.
Oh, it's good, $36, no, that's fine.
It went from 25, am I about right?
You did, you did.
It was a big jump.
We took it with, county allowed the city to jump on our, on our thing, we went from 32 down to 25, we saw it with.
And then it went back up again, yeah, we stayed at 25 forever.
Yeah, you stayed there, you stayed there for.
I appreciate that.
Eight years at least, there was some things that were done in cooperation with them, and when the waste manager got in a little favor with somebody or somewhere, and they lost contract.
Correct.
Correct. I did not realize this, I would have sent to you, but yeah, that's what's going on there.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Yes, sir.
I intend special force from other city departments or committees at that pool.
Well, we've got the two, the wastewater liaison, and we're gonna go and, we're gonna dig deep into wastewater real soon with resolutions coming up for the sewer funding. And the gas system really has no report except that the rate study is complete with the gas. It is not yet complete with sanitation. We hope to present both of them to you July. So we'll have, we have the gas completed, but we did them both at the same time under the same contract, and we'll have the sanitation, rate study, and gas study in the July meeting. And gas is not as healthy as you think it is, but it is healthy. I always came in with everybody saying, oh, we just have to move to New Gas. We're doing okay.
Highlight. Item eleven, new business, resolution two zero one eight dash one eight, a resolution authorized the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, apply for grant from Murray Regional Healthcare Foundation. Be used to initiate a recreational spin class in the community center.
Mayor and commissioners, I think you'll see over the last few months and in the months to come, that every opportunity we can to apply for grant money, we are. This is a zero match possibility with the Murray Regional Healthcare Foundation. And I'm really excited about it, because it's not just the city asking for this, or we're asking to put a spin program in the community center, but it ties into the seniors that can take advantage of it, and it ties into great schools that can take advantage of it, where any time during the day, they can come to the community center, get online, and take a class, and increase our physical activities with our students, as well as have it available for our residents. And we're going in front of the Murray Regional Healthcare Foundation based on the fact that recently, you probably saw the paper, Tennessee is number one for childhood, childhood literacy. That's something we're proud of. But to just get into action, more exercise programming, and I think just having the class, the classes and the equipment right there in the middle of the three schools and available to all the public. I'm hoping that we're successful. We, we plan to submit this in the next few days.
How many calls?
Fifty...
Fifty-one thousand nine hundred, I believe?
Fifty-one thousand six hundred.
One thousand six hundred.
How much?
Fifty-one thousand six hundred, it's no matter.
Hold that, okay.
Have you paid for the bikes on the spin stuff? And just so you know, I was just meeting with Dr. Jackson earlier, so he's really big on this as well, because he wants to actually incorporate it as part of what he's considering a new program that our startup is called Refit, DIT, or whatever it's called, with the theme.
And Mayor, in front of you with the little tab to sign is...
I won't sign.
Okay, and that, that was also signed by Dr. Jackson, because they're basically our partner in this, even though the money, the money flows through us.
Thomas, where's this going?
We actually have two or three ideas, and we're waiting to see, because they could, we're asking for thirty-six, they could fund twenty-four. And so we're waiting to see exactly how many, how many bikes we get to determine the best location.
Is that Dr. Jackson?
Yes, it is. I could have done it.
Did he skip writing?
He's an English major, better go.
Do you have the proposals in Mount, in Murray County Statement Tree? You can't read any of them, so it doesn't matter.
Get that from you, want to think of it? But yeah, I thought I could have probably done it right there.
You can't read any of them.
I thought it was, it's kind of tied to them, basically.
No, you can't read any of them.
He did, or whatever he is.
So that, if there's any questions on that, we are gonna submit that to the Murray Regional Healthcare Foundation in the next couple of days. We will make a presentation, Dr. Jackson's staff, Thomas and I, on July second to their appropriations commission, and then committee, and then, within a week, they make a decision.
Okay, do you hear Thomas, June nine nine?
We make it the second, they make, they vote on it the night. We make our, we make our, our presentation the second.
All the questions on this? Simple, I like, it is.
With no match.
I make a motion. We authorize, we authorize the city to apply for that grant as presented.
Alright, the motion been made, it would apply for this grant, is seconded. You're seconded, further discussion. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Of like sign, that resolution has passed, apply for it later. Item B, resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen, a resolution questioning the Murray County Election Commission's conducting an election with the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, on Tuesday, November the sixth, twenty eighteen, to elect two commissioners pursuant to election laws of the state of Tennessee.
Mayor and commissioners, we are doing exactly what we were told to do by Todd Baxter that needs to be done for this election, and got the resolution from him, and this is required to be able to hold the election in November for the two commission seats.
Okay, Chairman, ten a motion. So move, move for adoption, is seconded. You're seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
All in favor of that resolution twenty eighteen dash nineteen, that's been approved. Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty, a resolution in support of application to USDA Rural Development Community Civil Grant Fund.
Mayor and commissioners, this is a result of having Jim Tracy come and speak at the Rotary Lunch that talked about rural development funds, and of course, that's where we're getting our funding for our sewer issue, but he also talked about other funds that were available. And Chief Grooms in the Fire Department knows that in the next couple of years, we're gonna need to replace a fire truck, and we want to pursue that possibility with a thirty-five percent grant match. For those of you that didn't attend the study session, you missed the riveting PowerPoint presentation on what, what he wants to do. But really, it is something that we're going to be asking you to do in the future, and if we can get thirty-five percent of that paid for through a grant over the next couple fiscal years, we just need your permission to reach out to Rural Development to see if we can get that. And the other, thirty-five percent grant and what's the percentage that's long-term?
Rate?
The, the, the long...
Three and a half over the life of the program.
And how much money?
Sorry? Hundred and thirty thousand.
And Mayor, for your information, at that meeting I went over, because we didn't have that amount of budget in case we got this needed, right? And Phillip is assured, thinking we're gonna have the ten thousand dollars from...
Food capital improvement, food plan.
Which would be annual payment, yeah.
I owed it for the fiscal year to the end to see if we need it, if not...
And then that way, we've got the funding available for...
So if we got the grant tomorrow, we believe we already have in the budget the funding, because Phillip has in the budget to buy equipment that's required with this purchase.
Does it concern them when you start throwing those numbers around, what's the name of that?
In worst case scenario, we decide we don't want to accept the grant, we don't accept the grant. Hopefully, it doesn't get to that point, but...
All we're doing now is just requesting the ability to allow it.
Taking advantage of thirty-five percent grants outside there.
Okay, further discussion, questions? Chairman, ten a motion, please.
Make a motion that we support the application to apply for the USDA, USDA Rural Development.
Motion been made, it would be... And duly seconded, if we submit this, uh, application to USDA Rural Development, that's managed by the Fire Department, any further discussion? All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Of like sign, that resolution has passed. Item D, resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-one, a resolution authorizing appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations slash CDC.
Mayor and commissioners, you have passed the budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, and in there, you approved funds for three different nonprofits. We are required by law to post those in the newspaper, which was done in the last ten days. And we're also required by law, it may not have been done in the past, but we are required by law to pass a resolution appropriating those funds for those nonprofits. So the D, E, and F on the agenda is a resolution that's required that goes along with the budget where you've agreed to fund these nonprofits. CDC is twenty-five thousand dollars, hasn't changed in years, which is the one you're voting on right now?
Questions on this? Chairman, ten a motion, please.
Make a motion that we authorize the appropriation of those funds for the CDC in the amount of twenty-five thousand.
Motion been duly made, if we authorize this appropriation, is seconded?
Seconded.
You're seconded, further discussion. All in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Of like sign, that has also passed. Resolution E, twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, a resolution authorizing appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations transit allowance in Tennessee.
Again, Mayor and commissioners, it's something, there was a request, and it, Loretta, is it two hundred and fifty dollars? Just two hundred and fifty dollars, but we're still required to adopt the resolution, spend the newspaper, the two hundred and fifty dollars, and it is in the budget that you approved.
Would you explain to us what they're going to do with each one?
This, this is that regional group, she used to be a mayor in, I think, Hendersonville, but she's, she's reaching out to all the...
I saw that one time, so that's what I'm trying to do now.
She's reaching out to all the communities to try and develop a systematic, regional transportation plan. And as part of that, I think, as asked every city, maybe based on population, surely they're not asking for two hundred and fifty, yeah. And so that, that's why we put it in front of you, because she made that request.
So what are the other three cities that are working on this?
I don't, I do not know. I, I did not know, I did two hundred and fifty dollars, just didn't grab my attention on that. I just thought that if there's anything that, I know that you've been to meetings, Commissioner Granby, one or two, that you said was pretty enlightening.
Did you enjoy it? Did you think they were doing something?
Well, what they were actually trying to work on is doing public transportation between here and Nashville. But from my understanding, that we're still having a problem to get Murray County to go in on it. But it's supposed to stop at, um, right, supposed to have a parkway out there, and it has like a parking area where you can get on and catch your bus, or whatever you want to call it.
That's my concern.
They wanted to go further south, yeah.
My brother's always been on the tail on everything. And like...
Because they said that we're not, that Murray County has not really shown a whole lot of interest in that.
Well, we went to the meetings, we went... Years, and they talked the same thing, and, you know, the big eye in the sky was that we would get light rail down to at least, to exit forty-six, or at least exit fifty-three, upset and heartless.
Yeah, yeah, that parkway.
As you know, and this has been going on for years, and...
Now, because Nashville did not vote on it.
Probably not gonna happen in our lifetime, but I guess...
Figured for two hundred and fifty dollars, if we're a part of it, that at least we're in on the communication.
I was gonna take this temperature off and give it to the same system, and I had, I thought about this yesterday, and I had to give it to this one.
I'm with you, because here's my concern, if the county's not gonna support it, and it doesn't sound like they are. We're the further south community within the county, so if they're talking about already stopping in Spring Hill, because that's probably Williams County or...
Yeah, Williams County line, that's what I said, I was just about with that Williams County line.
I mean, you see what I'm saying? I'd rather see us spend that money.
And I don't know that the county's not...
We're the end of the road.
Right. I don't know that the county's supporting it, but let me just add, with all due respect, as we've passed the budget, this is in there, we've already published the donation.
Yeah, we did, we're...
But even, even if we'd have stopped at Williams County line, it still could be a plus.
You've already approved it in the budget?
But you haven't got a funding.
I mean, two hundred and fifty dollars, I think we've got better things to...
I guess our discussion would have a same system some day, where, where, we see great people there that are, that need some help. And we weren't able to help them, and, you know, but it's, it's, this is a multi-layered, highly, highly funded thing with a lot of dollars that's, that's... I mean, we've made videos and all kinds of stuff for the last few years, and the only thing I've ever seen out of it is the train going out to Lebanon. And that really wasn't part of it. You get in a trolley, you know, you see it all up down the road, but nobody on it.
But this doesn't go to the trolley?
No. I know, but I'm just saying...
It does involve, it does involve transportation within Murray County, though, too.
Commissioner Granby, you've been to one of these, and how involved with South Central Tennessee? How involved was South Central Tennessee development in this?
And this one? They go to meetings, and that's it? Not it.
Just curious, because that's, that's our best, oh, I mean, the ones that I've seen that work well, like in West Tennessee, it's a, it's a needy thing. I mean, they've got vans parked, like in Linden, I see them, Waynesboro, I see them.
We got the van, that's, that's simple, they got, they got a ton of vans.
Yeah, but this is very specific.
This is a different program.
This is not a van, this is the old bus thing, they're...
This is mass transportation.
Yeah.
If you would prefer, I would have Ms. Graves come out and make a presentation at the next meeting before you would not approve it, let her give you more detail that is, that would...
Is that Joanne, the former mayor?
Yes.
No, I'm not looking for it.
You've always known she's in charge of this.
I know her well.
I think before I thought that I liked it. Commissioner Granby, you're, you're seen in support of this, correct?
Well, my repute is supportive, because I would like to see it come to Murray County, because that way it actually, I mean, you know, a lot of people that really don't need to be driving to Nashville to special, because, first of all, because, you know, the elderly, and second of all, you're going up the highway at forty miles an hour. Anyway, okay. Now, I'm asking, anyway, I just think, me personally, I think it's a good thing.
Well, if they would put that back on the bus, you know, they tried that bus out of Alabama, if they would put those funds towards that, that would be a good thing. But they let that problem get away, that anchor company had that contract to go to Nashville. They can't do it for money, but they didn't help a lot of people, probably, they were coming at the wrong time to go to work. But this is, like I said, it's a fine stack.
Can you find out from Mayor Norman and the mayor of Spring Hill, what their, my interest is not so much the county, but what is Spring Hill doing about it? And why would it be at the county line, I mean, you know...
Because Spring Hill is just, Spring Hill is supportive, because they were there, but what you gotta understand is Williams County line is mostly Spring Hill.
I know, but I'm saying why, where, you know, could it come further? Is it coming further? I understand that, yeah, I see it too, but are they, how supported are they of it? And what is, you know, for one thing, I don't, wouldn't want to drive, if I've got to drive to Spring Hill, I'm just gonna drive all the way to Cool Springs to get picked up there, or just try to...
Can I make a suggestion, so we can live open, we got some really important stuff to discuss, is, could you get those questions answered, please? And maybe we defer this thing.
How did she, how did she approach it? I don't remember her ever being down here.
No, all been letters.
True, yeah.
It's been several letters. You've gotten letters?
I don't remember.
Yeah. You've got, yeah, there's a letter in there, in your budget book, too.
Just my seatwork.
But they, the letters are what got Ms. Granby's interest, and that's how she went to...
I remember when she, I remember when, but I didn't realize that was the same thing, if Joanne Gray's got the chair off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Make a motion, you know, or...
Do I have a motion to defer, or do you want to vote on it?
I think, Commissioner...
I would prefer that we defer it, so we can find out, get a little more information. I mean, I know it's not for two hundred and fifty dollars, and I realize it's in the budget, I'm proud of that. But let's just find out what the cooperation might be going on.
I'll be too, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to defer, okay.
Okay, the motion been made to defer this item, resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, thanks a lot, the state of Tennessee, any further discussion? Questions? Chairman? Has the motion, all in favor, signify the saying aye, motion to defer.
Aye.
You want to oppose that? Motion has passed to defer this, this resolution, please, for further consideration. Item F, resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organizations, Mount Pleasant slash Murray Museum of Local History.
Mayor and commissioners, this is just acknowledging another donation to a nonprofit. The museum chose to continue to have the city pay their gas bills rather than to take a direct donation, and it's in the range of fifteen hundred dollars, which is in the budget.
Okay, I make a motion to approve, is this seconded? All in favor, signify the saying aye, of like sign, that motion has passed, Mount Pleasant Museum. Okay, item G, resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to execute and enter into an EJ CDC engineered contract with Bard's Design Solutions Incorporated to provide preliminary and final design bidding, construction administration, and construction field representation for the construction of wastewater treatment plant improvements.
Mayor and commissioners, not everybody got to hear the presentation from the engineers of the study session, but... Mayor Commissioners, not everybody got to hear the presentation from the engineers of the study session, but this is the document that moves us forward, the next step would be the interim financing for all of our sewer improvements, broken down into three separate contracts, one being the wastewater plant and the trunk line, the other being the return from the legions to the wastewater plant, and the third being the Rainy Street Project Sewer. That will be bid separately as three separate contracts that will run concurrently, it's a very express, it's a very aggressive schedule time-wise, um, they anticipate this being finished at 2020, you're gonna vote next July on a consent order from the state that says we'll have everything done by 2022, so that gives us about 18 months to two years of leeway before we would ever get into a situation where we're having to face EPA. There are things in here that Cory and I would like to recommend that we make changes on, there was discussion as well on Thursday night of, I think it was Vice Mayor concern of the, um, engineering company being the, um, they would be the employer of the inspector position, it's not called inspector, it's got a bigger, more grandiose name now, but, um, everything that I can see and understand is that is really typical of the operation of these contracts. Barge Wagner or Barge Designs have a hard time approving the construction, having not had their inspector out there throughout the project. Uh, we, we can hire an engineer that would take a look at the plans and say, these plans look good, these plans make sense, or I have these concerns, of course, we would have to pay for that, um, and if we were gonna involve the fourth party to be the inspector instead of Barge, I would have to, um, I'd have to develop specs for that work, I'd have to advertise that, I'd have to take bids on it, and I'd need help preparing those specs, more than likely, Barge would be helping me prepare those specs, you know, that's the engineer that we use for this. So I'm okay with that, I do recommend that we would, um, work with that inspector very closely, to the point where we would have weekly reports, we already are gonna have monthly meetings, that's in the contract, and if there's anything in those weekly reports that I have a concern about, Donnie has a concern about, we can go to an outside engineer and have them review that and have some outside input. Um, it's a big expense in this contract, and I, I, my concern is I don't wanna double it and have a fourth party, um, but I did come up, I just wanna share that, since not everybody was here on Thursday night, but, um, if we get beyond that point, Cory and I do wanna make some recommendations on making changes to the contract that you're looking at, we wanna remove some of their indemnification that they have in there, that we're not comfortable with, um, and we wanna increase the insurance level from $2 million to $5 million, they've already agreed to that insurance increase, but I'll turn it over to you, Cory.
First, I just wanna say that the agreement, this EJ CDC contract is made by, um, engineering groups, and also by representatives and attorneys from rural development, and, um, the engineers make this contract, and then rural development goes through and makes their changes, rural development who you'll be getting the money from, or you agree to accept the loan and the grant from, so they go through and they make sure that it complies with all of their rules and regulations. Um, if we made any change to the substance of the language in the contract, it's doable, but you have to go through rural development, and you have to go through their attorneys, which are Arkansas and, and DC and their engineers. But I've talked with, um, Doug Sheldon, who's their rep, to give that process, if there was anything in the agreement that you were strongly opposed to, we could go through that, but it would delay, delay the process. You do have plenty back up, from what was in your packet, there's been a new, two new exhibits, there are changes to exhibits that were sent, so Exhibit G and Exhibit I are different, um, what I have is different from what you have. Exhibit G is the one that lays out all the insurance that Barge Wagner is required to have, um, the biggest issue in there is the professional liability insurance is $5 million, that's how much professional liability insurance they are.
Was two, and we require them to increase it to five.
It was two, and we asked it to be raised, um, that is highest, that's the highest limit they have right now, if you want it to be higher than that, you have to go back and renegotiate and ask for more, it'd probably be more expensive, um, but that is doable if that, you're not comfortable with $5 million.
Sure, okay, $5 million is a fine cost, right?
But, yes, they, they submitted the $5 million to us right now, um, Exhibit I is the indemnity exhibit, and what that does is it would give the, uh, city insurance coverage for the engineers negligent, professional errors, or an omission, strict liability, breach of contract, indemnity obligations, or warranties, up to $5 million. So basically what it's saying is, um, the city can only collect from Barge what Barge collects from any insurance company, so it, it limits the, the city's, um, to $5 million for professional limits, or for professional emissions, or errors.
And our recommendation on that is?
That that's fine, um, it's, but the second part, so that's Exhibit I A, Exhibit I B, um, is where the city is agreeing to indemnify the engineer if anything happens, we would recommend that that be removed.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we discussed it with them at late hour today, 5:00ish, and saying that that's what we're gonna recommend, that be removed, and they still believe that they're gonna sign off on it, yeah.
Is this different from, I guess, Barge and Wagner guarantee that the biomass may work?
That will be, that'll be the contract we have with Evocwa, to provide the biomass, there's gonna be several contracts, this is just for the engineering drawing of all of the changes we're gonna make. When we purchase the biomass system, we'll have a, a contractor with Evocwa who provides that, saying, uh, we're paying for an absolute guarantee that the system's gonna work, and we are paying a little bit more than that, but that's gonna be down the road when we get into three different contracts for three different projects, they have to be designed first by engineering.
Oh.
So this is just the engineering-
Just me and you.
The engineer is only responsible for their design, um, and then the contractors are supposed, we'll have a new contract that's the same, going through the same process, then approve our rural development, that will require the contractors to follow the engineer's design exactly, and that's what the RPR, I think is the term, inspector, is there to make sure that the contractor follows the-
The design guidelines.
Uh, and so when the contractor, when the contract, or the contractors come before you, you'll also have the option to increase their insurance, insurance bonds, and to make sure they have whatever protection you want, but, but as of right now, what Barge has proposed is a $5 million limit on what you could get from them, anything else you get, if something were to go terribly wrong, would have to come from your contractor's support.
And so, the Commissioners that were here on Thursday, Cory and I thought that all this markup and cross-out would be corrupted, and you'd have a pretty pristine document, and no, this is a nationally adopted through this National Engineering Association, and they require you're gonna keep the cross-outs in here, so there's a history of where the document started and how it got to where it is today, so as much as we wanted to clean it up, we ended, we ended signing it as it is like this. And, um, as Cory stated, uh, to move forward, we talked with rural development today, that the changes that we recommend are the increase in the insurance of the $5 million, and getting rid of paragraph B that indemnifies the engineers, and otherwise, we're recommending that it be forward.
And you haven't heard back from Barge Wagner on the, uh, IB, the-
We have, we, we, we received a response that there's a 95% chance that they'll still sign off on it.
Exhibit I can, you know, be done away with, but they really want it in there, uh, that you make the limit that you could let be total there.
Would we be adopting it with those changes you made, Cory?
Yes.
You'd be adopting it with the removal of Exhibit I B?
Okay, increasing it to $5 million-
Yes.
For professional liability, and indemnifying the engineer error for $5 million, where you can't pursue them for any more than that, for engineer, yeah, for engineer error, and that, that's I A, and then IB, indemnifying engineer, we're eliminating that.
Eliminating, but what'd you say about A's leaving it alone?
A, uh-
Just increasing it to $5 million?
Increasing it to $5 million, where we, uh, we can't, we can't pursue them for any more than that.
The one that you have, the one that they have submitted to us, is, it says, um, that it would be up to the amount of insurance required under this agreement.
And we're requiring $5 million?
Yes.
So that's what we give back to them?
So, again, the draft, the official draft that's been submitted has their insurance limit, which are, um, professional liability, which is what we're talking about, it's $5 million.
Yeah.
The others, there's for liability insurance, automobile liability, umbrella, and workers' comp, which all have different amounts.
Yeah, so it's up to those numbers.
Up to those numbers, and so you would be accepting it as submitted, with the exception of the Exhibit I, if that's what you want to do, um, but there's, like we said, there's other options if you went through it and didn't like it, but those would take a while or more negotiations.
What, what did they charge us to increase that?
They did not, if we were gonna go higher, they would have to charge us.
Higher than that, so they're not gonna charge you more than that, except two?
And remember, their, their actual work is a million five, a million seven, so I don't know you would get too much more than that without having to go after the contractors for work done, um, but, you know, we were able to go from two to five without any increase. And as Commissioner Davis said, when we get into things like the biomass, we're gonna have a guaranteed performance that we will pay extra for, for that specific system.
But that's with a different contract?
It's a different contract, yeah, you're gonna have three more contracts after this, at least.
Yeah. Cory, how do you feel about the rest of this contract, and do you see anything else?
Um, I feel like-
That's a good spot, or anything?
No, what, what, do you feel comfortable with your ability to analyze this contract? I'm asking, do you really, I mean, I know you, I don't know how much, how much experience you have with the contract, and I'm not, uh, I wouldn't be, at first, we need to get some of the stuff from that.
I, I, I think we're comfortable, the, the problem is you cannot, you cannot negotiate your way out of liability, you cannot get rid of it, there will be some there, what we're trying to do is limit it.
I don't wanna see what happens.
Absolutely, that's why we're all looking at it again, yeah.
It never needs to happen again.
And, you know, the only way, the best way that I can think to protect you with this contract is to increase your insurance limit, you know, we've done that as much as we could without, um, changing the cause, but as far as the inspector problem, you know, okay to come up with a solution of having the inspectors report to the city as well, or include the city in these decisions made, um, I'm not really sure how you can better protect yourself, this is a very standard contract, I've talked to everyone I can think of that could, uh-
I don't, well, somewhere, the, the inspector, is he going to work for this contract company?
Inspector works for, he works for Barge Wagner, because his job is to make sure that what the contractor's doing out there in the dirt matches the plans that we paid, you know, between a million and $2 million for, that is his sole job, is to make sure those plans are being followed. That's exactly what we did with the tile plant with Hefcotten Davis, it's, it's very standard, we will meet on a monthly basis, um, we're gonna, we're talking about requiring reports on a weekly basis, but the communication is constant, the inspector sees something, he's telling the engineer, the engineer's calling us, it's, the, the communication is constant.
Is he or she an employee?
Uh, Barge, absolutely, yeah.
What do we know about these things?
Um, right, I, what I understand is that we're hoping that we get just built the wastewater plant in, is it Hartsfield, Tennessee, is that a big, they, they know where they're looking for, whether it's based on water project or wastewater project, and what they're doing.
Well, now, now we compare it to what we had before, but, not to go back to horrible things, but before, part of our, why we got such deep throes, the state, I mean, we had no recourse of action with the, the prior, they was out of our hands, we got as much as we could from, from the, the, you know, the private sector, the state was who we couldn't go back on recourse of, and that was actually who was at fault, and we all know that, they even said that, they said, hey, but you can't touch us, so, I mean, we're looking at it out with some oranges on this one, as far as that, and it's pretty standard protocol, if, if an engineering firm is having a contractor to have their own inspectors, is, am I correct?
It is, it is standard.
I think it is, Cory, I think it is standard procedure, I, I wasn't familiar with this group of these contractors, and I felt maybe they really wanted to be fair enough, this, this group, I was, I was, the one that's building, this, this council of engineers that got together-
Well, I think they do, I don't, I think that's how they're employed, the chief of whatever, is, is it very-
Now, the inspector's an employee of Barge Wagner, Barge Designs.
He's an employee of the engineering group, which in my mind does not give us a ton of, um, and I go, I think about this too simply, and I know that Cory and I had this conversation, that I've got a banking board, you've got a bank that know your banking, it's got an appraisal that says it's gonna be worth it, you've got a contractor over here building, that you loan the money to, or land on, and you have an independent third party that worked for the bank, which would be the city.
You don't wanna start with an appraiser, though.
No, it's not an appraiser, it's not, I, but you have an appraisal that says that this is what the product's gonna be worth at the end of the construction.
Yeah.
And you have an absolute independent third party between that contract, and that bank that says, this is the amount of work that's been done, and this is how much you need to pay.
Well, if you, then keep in mind-
Let me finish, let me finish, please, I've been quite well, everybody else. And I don't see that here, and that bothers me greatly, okay, I'm just gonna tell you, all right, but having also taken the time to read through the contract, of which I don't like either, is that we don't have much wiggle in it, because this contract is pretty much a contract that if we went right now and said, okay, we don't wanna use this, we're gonna go to the next engineering firm, and they're gonna hand Cory that same document, and I don't like it, but sometimes you don't have much choice.
Yeah.
Okay, then the second part of it is, getting back to this inspector that take life to now calls something, it's got about five words.
RPR.
How many biomass systems has the inspector ever inspected before we allow him to come on site? We need a resume.
Your, your biomass system is gonna be-
It's part of the engineering, it's, the biomass system is part of the engineering that Barge will provide to us.
Yes, but you're gonna have an inspector-
And I wanna know who the inspector is, and I wanna see disqualifications for doing inspections of biomass systems.
Okay, and, but you will have inspectors that are making sure that the work is followed, then you'll have separate people that are looking at the biomass system, 'cause it's a separate contract, they have not seen your engine yet.
I know it is, but, but here again, this engineering firm is engineering the biomass system into this door, and if you've got an inspector that has never physically inspected or helped install a biomass system, that he has no qualifications.
Do we have any state so there's a limit on how many biomass systems have been built, so we're gonna have a limit on how many engineers, do we have any, it's a question, do we have, do we have any input into even finding how many inspectors there are out there that have qualified qualifications to inspect biomass systems, seriously?
When we get into a contract with biomass, that's when we ask those questions.
Yeah, that's with that, but I wanna know, because this guy's gonna tell us you need to pay them, because they've done this work, all right, but what if he doesn't know what they're supposed to have done to the biomass or for all the rest of this engineering that they put in place for?
And, but just, let me also remind you that any engineering that Barge Designs does has to go to rural development, has to be approved by their state engineers, their state lawyers, and up to the United States engineers.
I get that, but, but-
So there's, there's several levels, levels of approval.
I get that, but here again, we're going into a- You've taken- UTECH technology. And I don't know how many people in their lives have been as frustrated with UTECH technology as I have been, because it doesn't always work when it comes out of the box. And, oh, George, okay? I mean, we're down, and I get it. We delay this any longer, we're putting us up against 2022, and we don't need to be there. We need to complete this well before.
Well, I think we can reasonably ask for it, to see the qualifications.
Yeah, and that'll be when we get to the contract with that system.
Yeah, I don't think that'll be...
No, I think we need to see the qualifications of who they're going to provide to us. Barge Wagner's going to provide to us as it gets back to us. And if it says on there, and I would like to see specifically if he has ever, he or she has ever done a biomag project.
Do you want that before you vote on this?
No, I don't, we, I, I, I mean, it just is what it is, but, I mean, because they're providing it to us, we can go, "No, we don't want that one. We want somebody that's got these qualifications." Because it's not very, it's not specific in there. I looked at it, it just says, "We're going to provide it."
I don't, whatever, aren't our...
I...
Well, can we try to write an amendment after we vote on it?
Right, I'm not sure if...
We're not admitting the contract. We're asking for Barge to provide us with a resume of who's going to be our inspector.
You're asking for that. I'm not sure if that's a current requirement. As soon as an employee of Barge, the city would necessarily have input, if you're asking for additional input. Right.
I don't know that I, yes, I guess I am.
That's what we're asking. Do we, are we, if we vote on it, it's not in there, do we have a leg to stand on?
No.
Okay.
But you have several outs to get out of the contract. I mean, if they wanted to work with us, we want to work with them. If we're not happy with them, we can end the contract. If they're not happy, there are outs to this contract.
In, in their defense, they are recognized probably, southeast wise, is probably the preeminent engineering firm to do stuff like this, in their, in their defense. They got a guy named Paul, he remember that beat...
CDF, yeah.
Did he not say that he had experience with biomag?
Yeah, they put one in in Texas since we've been discussing it, yeah.
So maybe they got somebody.
I don't think I'm going to raise the question at all to ask, to provide that.
I don't think they'd have a problem with giving us exactly what the experience is of the RPR.
I think you're going to say, because we got Barge on the last one.
And they understand that we're a very gun shot.
That's why I planned to him Thursday night, we're not, we're not, as long as I serve on this and y'all make, decide I need to go tonight, as long as I'm up here, we're not going to have the same boondoggle we're dealing with today. I mean, we can't afford to get too far down the road.
But I mean, you think, Barge and Graydon, they want somebody that's amazing.
Absolutely, they want success from project just like we do.
They want success too. They want, they want to hang it on the wall, and they want to hang it on a good wall, not the one that's big and thin. And I get that, but things can happen.
Well, I, I, I mean, I should like to go back to the lagoon. They thought, you know, they had the best engineers or whatever for the lagoon.
It did.
Whether the state was a favor or not.
And Mayor, while we're discussing it, I told the lady, the folks here that night, I said, "Whoever the contractor's going to be, they need to be prepared to have performance lines equal to their contract, period, no questions."
I agree with you.
So we don't wind up owing whatever we owe, because we didn't have performance lines on three months.
And that would be, as you enter into the three contracts you're about to enter into next...
So where do we stand on here, I suppose?
We don't have a lot to... What is the point of the timeline? Is it absolutely essential that we pass this on?
In my mind, it is.
It is in mine too, but I, I, but I don't like that.
Well...
You're not going to be able to change it between now and July. We are recommending that you get rid of the indemnifying the liability for the engineer in that paragraph B, and we are increasing the insurance from two to five, and that, I believe, is, is protecting us from the engineering portion of it, and in every contract we enter into going forward, we're going to want performance.
So how did you get that done?
Which part?
The, what you just, what, getting the...
Several meetings and communications.
With them?
Yes.
So are you comfortable with us making a motion to accept with the changes that you presented us, Cory?
I wouldn't have it presented if I wasn't comfortable with it.
That's what I'm saying. That's what we would be voting on tonight.
And we're going to watch it like a hawk.
Well, you're going to have to just get them to Matthew and him down and just have a look. We won't see a qualification this night.
Yeah.
They'll get it for us.
They will, oh, they will. They, they want this to be a win-win for everybody.
Well, then, then we can, you're saying we can break this contract, and they don't do it.
We can, we can.
We're trying to make a motion to accept for this resolution.
Isn't that something that they would, with the conditions that she is...
Isn't that something that they accepted? They were so willing to increase their insurance to be in the biomag, and no cost.
It doesn't cost very much.
I know, but my point of it is, is why didn't they offer us that stall?
Because you know...
I think it's a standard contract.
Standard, yeah, it's standard.
It's affordable people.
Just to be clear with the, what's changeable and not. The, the numbers in the insurance amount, that we were able to just talk to them and get changed. If you wanted to change subsistively, like the inspector, that takes a long, long time, so...
We're not doing that.
You have to go through the engineers for rural development.
The entire contract had to be reworded.
I just think, I'd really just like to see their qualification before we enter into it. I don't think that's asked completely. I'd like to make...
And we'll try and even get, you know, as we move forward, get the person here in, in a meeting, re-meet.
So, Lord, for you going to...
I make a motion that we accept this proposal as presented by, I mean, the changes presented by Cory, our attorney, city attorney, with the changes in the professional liability and...
Removing I B.
And removing I B. The increase from two million to five million, and the change in one A, the limit, and removing I D from the contract.
Exhibit I.
Exhibit I, yeah.
Okay, that motion been duly made as a second? It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Let's, let's call the law on this, please.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
About zero.
Will all either sink or swim together?
Could the minutes reflect...
That's the way it should be.
Could the minutes reflect our discussion as with Commissioner White's concerns that we asked for the...
You'll have those to approve next month, but we'll include that conversation for sure.
Thanks.
All right, those are the discussions.
Item H, Resolution 2018-25, Initial Resolution Authorizing Issuance of Water and Sewer Revenue and Tax Bonds by City of Mount South Tennessee, in a power amount not to exceed $6,830,000 in finance, water and sewer system improvements and extensions to related costs.
Mayor and Commissioner, Resolution 2018-25 and 2018-26 are another example of resolutions that we have to pass, that is given to us by bonds council that we have to pass. We have put in front of you exactly what they've given us. We've worked with them in the past on bonds, and basically Bassbury does most of the bonds. H is the issuance of the water and sewer revenue tax bonds, and I is the sale and payment of the bonds. So these are, again, require paperwork.
Is it water or the other insurance? Is it water or the other tax bond? Which one we use?
Bassbury, Bassbury and...
Yeah, Bassbury and Sam.
Yeah. And they will be heavily involved in the next step, which is going to be interim financing. And they do what they do for us, which is at a, certainly at a cost, but Beretta and I met with private bond firms that were very interested in this, that they were going to charge about two and a half million dollars just to get the bond. So we're, this is a very good deal, and they're extremely professional, and, again, we're, we have to pass what we have to pass to get to the next step.
But now, this is just the legal work, right?
Yes.
And it's nothing to do with the issuance of the bonds and sale of the bonds, right?
That's to come, yeah. You're giving permission.
I have to guess we'll get that, so I'll contact about that.
This is the second ordinance, or the second resolution laid out exactly what you're agreeing to do when you're issuing the bond, and that's my...
But as far as including somebody in that process, I'm sure that they're open to that. So we, I, I put the two together because they're very much together, but you're just, you're just voting on right now and making a motion on H, which is 2018-25.
Okay, okay, does everyone understand what we're voting on?
I do.
Chair, will you take a motion? Lee?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 18, 2018, this one.
All right, motion's made. Is this second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. Let's, let's call the law on this, fix the issues, please.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
About zero motion here.
Motion's passed, okay. Resolution 2018-26, A Resolution Authorizing the Issuance, Sale and Payment of $6,830,000 of Bonds by the City of Mount South Tennessee, Authorizing the Issuance of Bond Anticipation Notes Prior to Issuance of Bonds, and Authorizing the Fledge of Revenue, Water and Sewer Levy Taxes to Pay the Bonds and Notes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I think we've covered it in the discussion, but if there's any questions, this is, language provided by Bassbury, Sam.
Who will make the determination of the, of the revenue, what you say, of the Bond Anticipation Notes? Who makes that determination?
Bassbury, Sam.
They will make a recommendation to us. We would have an opportunity. Has that limit changed from 12 million? Is it still at 12 million up there?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Their income was up 30, 3 million, unless that's changed.
Is that what bonds here?
Uh, yeah, on the Bond Anticipation Notes. It's authorized, it's, it's a bond anticipation, it's part of the issuance of bonds.
Right.
So, how much, what's the legal limit, what's the limit that we're going to on that?
Um, I'm not sure. Have they, has Blackshear given any information about that?
Only 12 million dollars, or, you know, we used to do the Bond Anticipation Notes on, you know, finance.
Yeah, I came across it there.
They had nine million, they lost chickens, so...
I mean, the, what we've been through before is they just say the amount, like this one has 6, 8, 3, and that's what, that's what we're...
Well, what is it, you...
The anticipation notes are, I think, to cover the engineering contract, so that's how you can go ahead and get started, you have money to go from, and then as soon as you issue the, the real bond, then you pay those notes back.
Right, so...
So I know that the...
They're interim finance.
Yeah, they're interim financing. They'll have interim certificates of indebtedness. There's not, no determined interest rate for that, and they'll be paid by the proceeds of bond. So that's all in the second resolution. I'm not sure that that answered your question of how limited is the limit?
We'd have to ask that question. I'm, you know, off the top of my head, of limits. But I just know that we're going forward with...
It's to cover you for a certain amount of time while you get the, the true bond issued. Yes, it's a temporary time.
Yeah, again, this is the USDA's money, so they're going to make sure everything is in place, that they're not losing anything in this project successful.
Do you motion to approve?
Motion been made to approve by Commissioner. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
You're seconding. Is there any further discussion? And the clerk, please call the law, please.
Mr. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
About zero motion here.
Resolution 2018-27, A Resolution Authorizing City of Mount South Tennessee, Anticipating the Foods, Property Conservation, Match and Grant Program.
Mayor and Commissioner, if we add this at the last minute, because we just heard word from TML that we are able to use the money that we spent on security and safety cameras within City Hall, and they will reimburse us the, the 50%, 50% of what we've already paid. So to accept that money, we need you to do it from this resolution. So this should be a, here's the last three, easy one.
You've got to move in a second.
Further, all in favor, stick a clap, say, "Ah, always like that."
And I have a couple of points I want to make before we adjourn, after you have the public comment.
Don't comment, some systems may be limited in time and number of comments. At this time, Mr. Joseph Brown's timed up, please, if you come forward. I think when I met you before, you went by Joe. Now you're Joseph.
I'm still Joe. Joe was kind of easy. I'm Joseph. I pastor Westport Baptist, and we have a concern. There's a dumpster that's been placed in between Westport and the building next door.
JV Electronics?
It might be, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's right...
The base is Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, but it's a, it's a long, 20, 20 dumpster, and it houses computers and TVs, OTs and things like that, and it seems to be a health concern about that, with the rain and everything, and run home. And plus, it's an ice hill for the church. I was just wondering, is there any law for open containers like that?
I bought it before the commission, on Thursday night, with, with Brown, and, um, while we're not here tonight, they have already been excited for it. They've been given a time limit on taking care of it. He was going back down there...
Next day, yeah, I think.
The next day, because I talked to one brother, and he was going back down there to talk to the other one, because one of your younger came to me, and, uh, we had on and sort of told him and explained, you know, how the church felt, exactly what you just said, but, um...
So we really think it's going to be resolved by their...
Well, I'm just not here tonight over, uh, food, food, and...
But if you want to give me your number, I will have, we will follow up with you, because he knows more about this than I do.
But I did promise the church too that I would stay on top of it and come back and stay on top of our, which I'm...
Is that the latrines in that thing?
That's what they, they recycle and...
They are some tremendous, it's strict, though, that latrine, well, it's about, those things have to be handled separately, have to be shrink wrapped.
And this is a container only four...
They can't just leave them just anywhere, is that what they're saying? Like, when it rains... Yeah, well, yeah, they, they, they should not be...
And some of them are actually, now you were in the container, and they're dumping them on the street. The doctor pictures of it, he bought it to himself, so...
Most people will not...
Is it a can, can you just pour...
No, it's a regular dump, not a typical, you've got the regular dump.
Can you put those in there?
Did you take one five or negative one?
Thank you for bringing that, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We will stay on it and keep in, stay in touch with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks?
I have a couple things, Mayor, when you're...
I'm sorry, we cut you off.
You didn't plan on, you didn't plan on... I just wanted to make a couple points. The first point is that I truly respect the decisions that you're making tonight. These are huge decisions. They are probably 12 years coming, long overdue, and that's why I know that it hangs on your, your head and your heart heavily, because it is long overdue, but they're huge steps, and they require a lot of money, and so I respect that, and the questions are always welcome as we move forward. And then having said that, I just want to acknowledge the extremely serious accident that happened, that we, we, somebody was watching over our boy when that car rear-ended our trash truck and did not put their foot on the brake, and there was not a fatality. How, I don't understand, but that woman is going to be cited in the court on July 18th in general sessions two, and we, we hope to be involved in that process, because she was attacked... was texting, because she didn't have children in seatbelts, and lots of other things, but we really escaped something very serious in that accident. I just want to make, that never made the media or anything like that, but Jim Bug, our employee, noticed that somebody was watching over him, and he was able to see the car coming and climb out of the way.
And he has come back to work.
He had to work.
Right, back to the garbage truck.
And he was totally didn't have to.
Considering that, considering that, I may be mistaken, but if a truck's going to make...
Now we are, yeah.
Okay.
We're having a...
Just on the main, just on the main.
Following on the main drive, where they, they can't, the speed limit and such, but we definitely are.
Okay.
So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, anything else, commissioners?
I would like to add one thing.
We're not talking to you either.
I'll let the board, it'll be a terrible thing. Last week, our community lost a great employer, being Jerry Sweeney and an awful good friend of this community. And I would like for everybody just to kind of think of the family of this Tennessee aluminum products, for those of you that don't know Mr. Sweeney, but he was a wonderful, wonderful man for this community.
Very appropriate. This commission should do something.
Yes, sir.
And invite his family to come.
Body and family, because they give a lot back that we, and he did it very quietly, because he did want to provide them.
We have Water Day tomorrow from 10 to 1:00. Everybody come out and see it, it's always fun, and then the...
We had Water Day yesterday on Halo.
We have Water Day, what up? Next week, the meet and greet is at the...
I'll say it, we're adjourned.
Sunday, early morning, it's thirty.
We had Bull Day today. That was Bull Day, that was after Water Day.
Now, the wind over is...
On Water Day.
Why?
Because they know, right? I just think...
Seriously.
I don't know. Hi, everyone. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen. I'm Karen.